All right. Hey, guys. We're live. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. This looks like the old days. I am Coach Ashley, joined by founder Greg Kilwin.
Hello, hello, hello. Welcome, everyone.
Excited to see you guys here today. Come and let us know where you're coming in from in the chat. We're excited to have you. If you're brand new, welcome. We love that you're here. This is something that is free and open to anyone who is growing a business with Young Living. These sessions are designed to give you live help and support and also guidance and know-how. We want you to get good at things that are worth getting good at. Using our platform, being one of those key things to create more time and space and abundance in your business. And we like to think that we help you do that on these calls. So if you came here today with questions and you need help, definitely go ahead and add to the Q and A your questions that you came here with. We will reserve a section of our call today. For, here we go, party view. Sorry, I always forget to do that. We're going to reserve the end of our call for that live one-on-one help. I will let you know, this is going to be a little bit different today. I made a post in the Go for Gold Student Group yesterday, offering to do live reviews of published websites on our platform. And the feedback was astronomical. And so what we're doing is this week, while I am still in location and have an active internet connection, I'm moving in a few days. We're going to go over and I'm going to do copy review and conversion review on your websites, kind of give you strategy. And then next week, Greg is going to be working with you guys on the tech stuff. So if you're hung up on like, how do I make it do this or work this way? Or get this thing to show up like that, we're going to be getting into that more next week. So if you asked for a website review, know that I have it all in queue and it's like probably going to crash my browser. There are so many. I'm going to do my best to get to all of you as quickly as possible. So again, thanks for being here and thank you for being willing to participate and share your work. Just to give you guys a little bit of background, I did mention this is from the Go for Gold Student Group. If you guys don't know about Go for Gold, it is a program that began with Martha Crecci, who reached gold in six months with Young Living. She put together a series of videos teaching how she did it. And then we all put our heads together for this sort of 2.0 that is now Go for Gold, that actually teaches you all of the steps of implementation and building an entire system like she has from the inside out, winding up at the end with a template that we give you and instructions on how to build your own custom homepage. So if you want to know how to follow those steps and get the results, a lot of these folks are getting, go to the content partner section on our homepage, look for that. You could also go to getoiling.com/goforgold. It is really kind of the most complete resource that's out there that teaches you in condensed, linear, step-by-step, do this, and then this, and here's the homework fashion to absolutely fill out your Good Oiling website with everything that you need. So in case you didn't know, you probably did, but if you didn't know, you do. Getoiling.com/goforgold. All right. So what's up, guys, in the chat? Oh, and by the way, if you aren't on the list today and you would like for us to live review your website, this is something that we want to be doing more frequently. So send us a message to support@getoiling.com. Specifically, let us know what week you're available to come on live with us. It's going to be a Thursday at noon Eastern and then of course, whatever it is, whether it's your funnel, so you're a landing page link, or it's the front page of your website. All right. So I guess without further ado, let's get into this. We got a lot of ground to cover here today. All right. All right. Now, is this a good resolution? Do I have this? Should I like scooch it up or out or whatever?
I think so. Probably make it a little bit shorter.
A little shorter?
Looks a little tiny for me.
Yeah. Well, so the resolution on the photo, I think, is something that Alyssa needs some help with. And where do we go? Just so we're clear, because I think that she was, that was one thing she was interested in. If you upload an image and it's like not quite fitting in your scroll bar up here, where do we go inside of Get Oiling?
This page is under, it's under the Customize My Site link in the menu. And there's, then there's a little button that says website. Or no, I think it's a customized button right next to the theme header, something like that. It lets you swap out that image on top. If the image is too, if it's getting cut off on the side, what I usually recommend is like take it into your favorite edit, image editor program. I'm not familiar, Canva might do this, but like just make the space on the side of it bigger that will shrink it all in and then you can upload a new one. That one does look a little fuzzy, though, just looking at it. So a higher resolution would be awesome if possible.
Yeah.
It's on the upper left. So maybe pick some, you know, pick a different image, too. It might be another option there.
Exactly, exactly. So what you can do, you can find a great, I don't know, what we really often see in a space like this is like a landscape image or something like that. That's usually a solid pick for this kind of thing. All right. So Alyssa, Alyssa's using one of our custom themes. So this is something that when you're getting started with us, this is done for you already. All she's done is swapped out this image up here and added her logo to her site, her site logo. She's also got her My Story and Photos set up. This is great. I would recommend as soon as you're able to get to that stage, and I know you're in Go for Gold, because that's where this call to, you know, call to review came from. Make sure that if you're using this as your front page, that you do have prominently placed, you do have a call to action here. I'd recommend that you maybe make it bolder and bigger. And then consider offering your landing page lead magnet, what have you, right here. So I created a guide that does X, Y, or Z. Or if you're using a lead group, I've got a group that shows you how to da-da-da-da-da and have the link to that here. And just so you guys can see, this is what the rest of this particular theme looks like. Again, you guys have got access to this. If you're looking at this, you've got some kind of market compliant to where you are, website, just like this one, that's got all this kind of good stuff. All right. Now Carrie has, ooh, a custom site. This is beautiful, Carrie. And it looks like Carrie used the template in Go for Gold. This, this looks very much like the template in Go for Gold may have been used here, even if not. This is excellent. So you've got a guide. Okay, Carrie, this is what you do here. Make sure that you are specific, right? So you are saying right here, here's my guide. Make sure that you are creating congruent experience here. So this says, three steps to reducing inflammation and chronic pain. So get my guide, three steps to reducing inflammation and chronic pain. And bonus, if you can get like a screen grab image of it, so it looks like a thing that they can see, and put that up here with this text, that would be even more, even more effective for you for leads. This is great. I love it. All right. Free community. So you've got a Facebook group there. You've got your blog here. And then you've got contact, which brings up your info. That's great. Check out your blog real quick. Love it. So you have your custom fonts and colors uploaded and they're beautiful. I really love this blue with this nice brown color. Good job. Really, really good job. Make sure that you are offering as often as possible. A, I do see you have affiliate links here, but do try to include your funnel links on your blog posts, because that's going to be one of the main means by which people will eventually become your lead. Got to give them a place to give you their contact information. And the seeds that you're putting out there, the breadcrumbs better, that they'll be following toward what you're offering, they need to have a way for them to raise their hand and say, hi, I'm a lead. I'm someone that you need to be talking to. So make sure that you're putting an opportunity for them at the end of your blog posts.
Yeah. And quickly, if I can interject, they're related to that. There's a new blogging feature for customization, too. I don't know if anyone's stumbled on that yet, but under the blog settings now, you can actually put a header image or just a header section at the very top of your blog, at the very bottom of your blog. There's even a setting, just based on what you were saying, that appears at the bottom of every blog post. So some people have the same offer that they want to put on the bottom of every blog post. You can do that now. There's a field in there that lets you do that. So you can link to the landing page. I think Camille had asked a question, Q and A as well, about how someone can subscribe to your blog. So what you just said, plus if you want to like go back and put it on all your blog posts, if you've got a bunch of blog posts, you can go in there and change the setting and then it'll appear there now. So that's new in the last, I think, week or so.
Awesome. Can we put buttons on them now?
Yes, yes. There's a little button, insert button now. It's a little meta there, button insert button.
That's a button insert button. So guys, click the button, insert button, put a button at the bottom of your blog post so people can very easily see, oh, here's a thing, I need to click it, right? Because if it's bold, that's going to draw the eye. Excellent, excellent. I love that. All right. So Diane has one of our landing pages here. And it looks like you've got the stock information that's on it. You've got your story here. Make sure that you go back and double check. Sometimes this happens when you copy and paste from an addition, someone out, from an outside source. Just make sure that you select all of your font here and make sure that the font is the same size and the same font family. You've got that in a couple of spots. Sometimes it's just a weird code thing that happens when we copy and paste from somewhere else. Ooh, join our community. Okay, here's, here's one. Can we, in the My Story and About, is there a button button there, too?
Yeah, it's pretty much anywhere now that there's an editor. So yeah, you can put that there. It's under, the editor has little groups on it. It's under a little tab called More Rich, I think, is what it's labeled. And then under there is a button.
Fabulous. So highly recommend you make this a button, Diane. And then even where we're talking about, let's see, I think going to right here, I might enter down and make this text bold. You want to draw their eye toward this transitional language, toward your call to action, which of course, the actual call to action is going to be on the button, because the button will be nice and big and draw their eye, but then contextually, what's the button talking about? They're going to want to see that bold text separate from the rest of the paragraph right above it. That's going to very easily help them to very quickly, because that's what they want to do, easy, quick decipher, is this for me, right? So make it easy for them to easily and quickly say, this is for me. I gotta go check this out. Awesome. All right. Amanda, hello. This is one of our content partners with Get Oiling. She has wild customer delight. Beautiful, amazing stuff that our people are loving on. Thank you. Great little logo here. Look at that, you guys. It's so cute. Oops. My bad. Logo is so cute. I can't get over that. All right. So this is great. I love, I love the imagery here. I love how you're speaking straight to them. You've got really great aesthetics here. No surprise. Okay. I would, now I know this is, this is like an image text block that you probably made in Canva. You might have used Ale Dean for this, which that is another, we have a website course from one of our members where this is taught, that's on our content partner section as well. What I would encourage you to do, just in the way of copy, Amanda, is this part right here. If you are curious about these things, you belong here. I would, I would try to find some kind of way to bold this or just kind of make this part, get the eyes' attention more immediately. Bolder text, different color, something like that, that actually makes them keep reading and pay attention to this part, because what you're doing right here is saying, hey, you, hey, you, this is for you. Pay attention, right? So there's lots of other nice stuff here and that's great. And honestly, your ideal person, we want to wish that they had the attention span to read through all of the lovely things that you put onto your page. But the average human attention span in this day and age is that of a goldfish. That's eight seconds. So we want to be able to, as quickly as possible, shout out to them and directly into their hearts and minds, hey, you, yeah, you, this person, this is for you. Pay attention. Here's what's in it for you. Okay. So highly recommend, and even actually in this case, on your page here, consider putting some kind of messaging to that end up here at the top. So you have flourishing homes and families. Maybe this can go a little further down. Another thing you might consider, and this is something that I've talked about in other website reviews, is to have some kind of offer above the fold, if you don't have a pop-up, right? If you're offering some kind of giveaway, your lead magnet, that's something that you either want to have pop up pretty quickly or have this stuff above the fold for them to say, oh, hey, yeah, okay, this is for me. I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep reading. I'm going to stick around. Because we may not be so fortunate for them to make it down here and for them to see all of this lovely context that you're giving. All right. I love your copy. I love how emotionally connected you are with your copy. All right. Yeah. So here we go. This message that you have right here, these calls to action right here, I would recommend that you put them up here at the very top. If you did that, leave everything else the same. Let them peruse through more about who you are and what you're about after they see what's in it for them. After they see you talking straight to them, I think this would be a lot more effective for you. Let's go ahead and look and see what that looks like. I love this button color. Oh, it wants me to download a font. So maybe, maybe there's, there's something strange there that happened. If you want to check on that. So that's, that's going to go over to your lead group on Facebook. Excellent. All right. You've got several downloads available here. Again, really beautiful images. I would, yeah, no, you have free downloads here. That's fine. This is good. Excellent work. Excellent work. Just make that one shift. All right. What's up, Jill? This is very bold. I like this. Lifestyle and Wellness Strategy. There's more than one way to improve your health. It's all in here. Ooh, okay, Jill, this is excellent. This, this is actually quite good copywriting. You've got very striking images. Like, this is really cool. I want to know how you did this. And then you've got really bold, really big letters, because again, I mean, guys, it feels, it doesn't feel right to say this or to think this, but we sometimes have to, when we're thinking about how we get people's attention, think like a kindergarten teacher. It's true. Like, this is, this is how we have to think. That doesn't mean that the person that we're speaking to is intellectually on a five-year-old level, but their attention span kind of is compared to like when we were kids or, you know what I mean? Like, it's, you just got to keep that in mind. This grabs, okay? And then you say, and this is bold, you got this little Facebook thing here. I love this. See how to combine and stack wellness strategies in here. And I assume that's your lead group. You got that photo is so cool. You're in the right place if you want these things. Fabulous. So good. This is so good. Okay. I don't know what happened here. Do, oh, you know what?
Wrong link.
Yeah. Check your link here. What we want to do here, actually what you can do on this page, is anything that you would have offered on a landing page, you can just put into the copy on the pop-up on this page. So it actually, they stay on this page before they go off. But definitely do check what that link is, just making sure that it's correct. All right.
Yeah, it looks like it may be an old URL, actually changed domains or something, but yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. All right. So here's the pop-up. You may want to have this come up a little sooner, perhaps. And this is super fun right here. Oh, I love it. Awesome. You, you understand how to get attention. Good job. You might be a little blue. Oh, you got one that pops up right away. All right. Travel with Shannon. I love it. It's time to make your travel dreams a reality. Good job. Good job. Big, bold, evoking images, and then above the fold, get my guide. Love it, love it. Okay. So this is the one that came stock with this. I don't know if that's what your plan was. Just make sure that you're keeping congruent here. Make your travel dreams a reality. Four things that keep you from traveling more and how to eliminate them. Make sure that that copy is here. And then of course, that's what you're delivering on the other side of this. I love this. This is so cool. Would you like to learn more? Let's chat. Oh, you're going to want to check the link here. It looks like it, you may have selected the box, Open Link in New Tab. Make sure that if you're going to use the hashtag contact field, that you do not let it open in new tab, because what's it going to do? It's going to do this. It's going to take you to, excellent, that's a page editor.
Oh, it's the wrong link. Yeah, she's got the page editor link in there instead of the actual, whatever, just a hashtag contact.
Yeah. So your visitor, if they're not a Good Oiling user, is just going to like wind up on the Good Oiling homepage. So you don't want to do that. All right. So you've got your Facebook lead group there. You've got your blog here. And then you've got, here we go, this, this contact, that's correct. That's what that's supposed to do. Excellent. You got plenty of bold calls to action here. It looks like you're, you're still, like, maybe you haven't started blogging yet, but you're doing a great job. I like your use of maps. This is excellent. So good job. This is a really great start. And that was a, that looks like it was a Go for Gold webpage theme. Okay. Dominique, I love this. All right. So this is one of our themes as well, with a striking picture of you. You are gorgeous. And we've got your story. All right. Same as I said with our first review. Make sure that you really bold out the transition to the call to action and the call to action itself. And of course, if you're linking somewhere, if you're, if you've got a lead group established, or you've got a landing page established, and if you don't, it's fine for Contact Me to be the thing. Just make sure that you set that text apart from the rest of your text. Because again, people aren't necessarily going to be reading for comprehension. They're just kind of scanning for the big thing. So give them a big thing that tells them what to do next. And you're going to have, it's going to be a lot more effective for you. This is just so cute. I love this. I love this image. Awesome. So you also have, okay, cool. This is one of our themes, isn't it? But you've got like another image in here.
Yeah, like that custom section there. There's that field for that.
That's right. That's right. Perfect. So this is great. If you can get this message into an image resolution that might fit up here, this might be even more effective for you. Because again, this is kind of speaking straight to, hey, if you're looking for this, this, and this, you're in the right place. Keep reading, right? Kind of tell them what to do first. Awesome, awesome. And then of course, you're using a Good Oiling theme. And you've got your custom fonts and colors. Excellent. And this really pretty little rainbow. I love this. Good job. All right. Mama Bear Living. What's up, Michelle? I like this. I like the imagery here. This is sassy. All right. Okay, this is good. So again, you may want to consider putting a longer logo up top about, you know, you and who you are. And then using this prime real estate up here at the very top to let them know what's in it for them. Here's why you should be here. Here's why you should keep scrolling. But in terms of branding, though, you've done a really good job. I like this. Oh, you've got, you've got some of your affiliate marketing here. You've got, oh, this is just lovely. This is great. All right. Yeah. So main thing for you, please, please, pretty please, take advantage of this great big prime real estate opportunity at the top of your page to tell them what's in it for them, why they should pay attention and keep scrolling through, or to importantly, click a button and get what you're offering, your lead magnet. All right. Spoil yourself, Canada. I love such a cute URL. All right. So you've got one of our, our stock landing pages here, and then you've got your story. This is great. I like how you are formatting and making different parts of what you have to say stand out. This is actually a trick to really getting people to engage with your content. If you guys ever notice, when we, when we send out emails to you from Get Oiling, we got a lot of this kind of stuff in there. It's because I do it. And this is something that really works to grab people's attention. If you have a big block of text, it's really easy for people to just go, you know, just kind of not really reading through it. But if you have things that pop out and grab the eye that disrupt, interrupt, then people tend to pay better attention. And of course, if anything turns them off, they go away and that's fine. You don't need them in your life anyway. This is, this is good. So just like I've mentioned before, make this whole thing bold. Make the whole thing bold and make it just super clear. Like, if they were to just scroll through and be like, yeah, 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 okay, okay. Are you ready to get blah, 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 blah? Do this, right? Because they're kind of scrolling for, all right, what are you offering me? Right? Maybe this didn't quite click with them. You've got a chance to do it down here. Make it super clear, really bold. What are they going to get? What do they need to do right now? Good job. All right. Let's see. This is Tamara. Hello. I love it. See, look at you. This is, you've got your, your lead magnet up here, an image of it. Excellent work. And then you've got your, you've got some copy here as well. Beautiful job. Again, try to take advantage of this real estate up top to let them know what you offer and give them a call to action to take advantage of that. So put that button up here, right? Say, hey, you, so-and-so, put it on the page, right? Hey, you, are you ready to live the life you deserve, right? Put that up here. And then repeat it on the pop-up. And then put the button there so that they can go ahead and get that right away. You, you really do have a short amount of time to get someone to take an action when they land on a page. So, okay. I do love, though, your visual branding. This is very pretty. I can tell you followed Ale Dean's course. And your colors are, like, you've done a really good job with the visual branding. Excellent, excellent. Oh. Oh, not just a mom. Okay. Put this offer up top. Put this offer up top, Tamara. You are not just a mom. Join our community of moms who are... and put the button there. Put this at the top of your page. This is power. This is power. Don't hide this down here at the bottom. Put it up top. This is another thing that you could choose to have up top as well. I help moms make an impact on their family and their lives. Learn how you can create financial freedom that your family deserves. Show me the money. Ooh, actually, just scooch this, like, just scooch this one up. There's the, there are little arrows on the custom pages feature. Just pop this one right on up to the top. You can change the background image if you wanted to. But this is the kind of thing, guys, that you want to have occupying the top real estate on your homepage. Bold. This is who I'm for. This is what I do for them. Here's what you need to do to get it. Put this at the top of your webpage, guys. All right. But again, really beautiful visual branding that you have done here, Tamara. Good job. All right. I like that image. Three things you can do now for glowing skin tomorrow. So I'm, let's see, I know that this, this is a landing page template from Go for Gold. Excellent. All right. So you like to talk about hormones. I love it. All right. Again, here for you. Make this bold. Make it bigger. Make it stand out so that people know where to go. I am excited to see what you do with this. I can tell you've just gotten started with us. I would also consider you do, oops, just a little bit of kind of tweaking around, right? So three things you can do now for glowing skin tomorrow. I would, I would try to maybe adjust the big copy up here so that it's a little more congruent. Maybe even something along the lines of what you've said down here about hormones. Hormones, they're not just for teenagers. You know, three things you can do now for glowing skin tomorrow, no matter your age, right? Because you do need to be calling out who you're talking to, right? This, this is, a 13-year-old could read this. But you need, you need people to know that this is for a woman who is not 13. And, and you're going to show them how to get it, right? And if you want to use a striking image like this, you might want to give just a little bit more verbal reference to it. You know, about your greatness or something like that. I do, I feel where you're going with this. I don't think that it's necessarily translating with your words quite the way that you probably really want it to be. So, so yeah, excited about that for you. Excellent. Okay, yeah. All right. This is a Facebook group. So I missed that one. Okay, this is Martina. Okay. Sometimes it's, yeah, if you don't have your name like up here on the page, you don't necessarily know if I'm saying a name right or not. All right. So Martina, Health and Wellness, Ten Page Guide on Self-Love. I would encourage you here, Martina, to, to get the, to get, to swap, swap the language around here to be something more like, you know, how self-love can get you. What's the big thing they want, right? Because I don't think that most people who need to know about self-love are walking around talking about it by that name, right? They're walking around talking about it around the symptoms of not having self-love, right? Or around the desires for what the benefits of having self-love are. So start talking about the benefit of the benefit here. I think it's going to make this a little more effective for you. I really love how you have integrated your colors. It's very, very pretty, watercolor-y. Very, very pretty. There you go. Good job. You've got your, an image of what you're offering here. Overcome self-critical thoughts and be brave enough to pursue your goals. Okay. This, you want to have this kind of language here unless this is going to pop up. Okay. So if this is going to pop up right after they get here, then this is going to be more effective. But if you can have a little bit more on the page about what you're offering, that's going to help you out. Awesome. So you've got your story here. And you've got your pop-up. Love it. You're doing yoga. You've got your contact field. You've got a blog. Gorgeous. This is great. You're doing YouTube, too. Good job. This is awesome. And you've got a button. See, there we go. Greg, there it is. Button. Join the community. Excellent, excellent, excellent. Um, oh, I love it. You've got, this is great. Brand your blog images. You're using your fonts and colors. Really, really good job. Nice, bold buttons. Yes. This is excellent, excellent, excellent. Here we go. Calls to action can also be to get people to engage with your content, if I can get this to highlight correctly. On your blog, on YouTube, elsewhere. Very good work. Very good work. Okay. Jenny, this is, this is one of our Mingsha landing page themes. Okay, um, Jenny, this is, this is one of our Mingsha landing page themes. Cool. All right. You've got, you've got your story here. Bold this up and make it big. Just again, people are always, they're going to scroll first before they decide that they want to commit to reading the whole thing unless they already know you. So, um, so just make sure that the thing you really want them to see and take action on absolutely grabs their eye. Okay? Good job. Now for this part, um, I would definitely tweak this up a bit. You know, who needs an energy boost? Who is this for? It's not just, I mean, everybody could probably use an energy boost who's not, you know, who's, I don't know, who's under 14 years old. But who is this for? Who is this uniquely for? How do they know that this isn't just some other thing that they could find anywhere else on the web? Speak directly into your person or, you know, and, and the parlance of the Martha verse, speak to your bat signal. Talk straight to them here and, and they're going to want to know what this is. Okay, Leanne, Leanne Nelson. Ooh, horses. So nice. I like this. This is cool. Time to let go of your fears. Let's work together, find your confidence, know your passion, develop that deep trust and connection you've always dreamed of. Okay, free calming guide. Three techniques to start your journey. I would, I would evaluate this copy just a little bit. Free calming guide. We don't necessarily think about calming as a journey. Somebody who feels like they need more calm in their life. So three ways to find peace or what kind of peace, peace in spite of what circumstances, three ways to find peace, even if you have to hide in the bathroom from your toddlers, like, think about what, like, what, what are the, the more granular circumstances of your bat signal person? And make sure you do that. Um, I, I love your, your colors that you've chosen here. This combination of colors are really beautiful. This is nice and bold. Good job. Ooh, Papa. Three ways to help you and your horse become calm. I love it. Awesome. This is good. This is good. Um, you can also, I, I would recommend on a pop up that you edit the text down just a tiny bit. Again, you, the more text you place in front of someone, the less likely they're going to get distracted and go do something else. Most people do not tend to read very far down a page. So just as short and as impactful as you can be when you're trying to get them to take an action, the better off you are. All right, there's that. You got your contact. Great. You got a community. You got a blog. You got your branding carried over here and you've got some images. Cool. You've got YouTube videos you're linking off to. I like it. There's your free guide. Don't forget, add some buttons. Buttons really draw the eye. Hello, Kara. Pumps right up. I love it. The mom nurse. I dig it. This is very striking. Like it, this grabs, right? Especially that pop up. Like it's just, hey, I'm Kara. All right, Kara, tell me more about yourself. I like this. Oh, this is beautiful. You guys, we're, we're kind of in, in my home. We're, we're Japanophiles. We, we, we speak some Japanese. We travel there anytime we can, seeing the cherry blossoms and everything like this. It's just, you're, you're grabbing me. This is beautiful. All right. So we're talking about becoming a nurse. Fast forward. All right. Got your story. Great picture here. I want to go to there. That's great. All right. Free downloads. All right. So what I would do for your download section is actually, um, see if you can, oh, look at that. Look at it. It animates. That's so neat. So I would actually not use a big scripty font for this section. I would use just a really bold standard type, typeface that says what the thing is and then either have a button attached to it or underneath it rather, or have some kind of click here for on it. It doesn't seem like you would have to be so explicit as to say, click here to do this. But you really, really, really do have to be hyper, super, super specific, like literally click here and do this. Hit reply and say this. Uh, you really do have to give people specific instructions and above and beyond what you might naturally think you need to do. If you want them to actually do something with it. So don't leave it for them to figure out because remember attention spans, they're not going to stick around to figure it out if it's unclear on what they should do. One other thing, importantly, uh, use this real estate to talk about what you can do for them, right? You want to, like, here's the thing, right? When, when you meet someone, let's just say you're at a networking event. And this is your business card because really like where it's not generating leads, your website is a business card. Uh, and so what you're doing is, is you're saying, hi, I help people like you get this result. And then they say, oh, that's cool. And then they want to keep listening and then you tell your story and they're listening. But if you don't have that, hey, I'm here for you. This is about you. They're going to get distracted and go do something else, right? If, if they arrive there and, and they're like, oh, it's all about you. If they know you, they're going to eat it up. They're going to love it. Right? If they're, if they're your follower, but if they're not, if they're a stranger who happened upon your blog or found, you know, a thing on Pinterest that led them here, then they need to know, okay, well, what's in it for me? What's, what is here that is worth my time spending reading through everything? Use this top level real estate to communicate that and get them to take action on something that's going to help them right now. Build that trust factor with you so that they can move closer to working with you, right? Where cat ladies come to create a healthy home and a healthy life for themselves and their cats. I love it. I love it. I'm not sure who this is because I don't see your name. Uh, put a button up here, please, please put a button up here for them to get a thing from you. Beneath that, I would see if you could put this in like a line or make it smaller, scooch this stuff up just a bit and then put a button here, right? Okay, cat ladies, how, how does a cat lady create a healthy home for themselves and their cats? Get my guide. Put it there. Put the button right here. Okay? All right. Do you? This is cute. The cats meow. This is great. You have come to the right place. Cat pawns. I'm living for this right now. All right. How, uh, how I can help, uh, Kelly safely. This is cool. This is really, really cool. All right. Try to make these buttons if you can, or have click here on the image. Again, just to make sure that people know what they need to do and not just guess or have them go like, oh, maybe I get it if I click here, but it doesn't say, okay? Meow, the list mailing list. This is so cool. I love it. This is great. This is an excellent, excellent subscription landing page. Good job. Good job. Just make sure that you get a little bit more clarity above the line here, above the fold, uh, to give them something that they can get from you. All right. Happier hormones. It's time to thrive, not just survive as a woman. That's powerful language. Unlock three ways to start supporting your hormones today. Get access immediately. Um, all right. So if you are really speaking to a woman who is very aware that it's hormones that she needs to be addressing, then this language is correct. If you're speaking to a person who is not clear that it's their hormones that are affecting their current state that they want to get out of, you might want to consider tweaking this language. But since you're all about happy hormones, you're probably talking to somebody who's out there trying to figure out the big hormone question, which let's be clear, is a whole lot of people, right? Okay, so going down, Ally Brian, this is a such a cute picture of you. Let's see, the wellness wells. You've got your Instagram and you've got empowering women and wellness. This is cool. Is it popular? Is it possible to have happier hormones? This is good. Good job. Yeah. You, you got it all up here in the right place. I might even consider again, making just, just push yourself down just a little bit here so that it's just super clear. I help women have healthy hormones, get my guide to three steps, duh, 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 and then they find out more about you. Okay? Just strategically, that's going to be more effective for you. Big, beautiful tribe support, education, custom one, well, it's well, it's plans. Join my wellness tribe. What's this about? Join my tribe. We got a video. Excellent. Okay, this is great. You're setting them up to offer them young living. Good job. That's excellent. All right. Education. Great. Ooh, I love it. Again, make sure you've got the language. Click here. Put, just put click here on these images and they're going to work better for you. It makes these images kind of like buttons. And if you put a little border around them with click here on the image, it's going to be even more effective. Promise. All right. This is, this is pretty good. This is pretty good. Just make sure again, you're using that top level real estate to tell them what's in it for them first. This page is genius. I hope you're sharing that with your team. Uh, all right. How to laugh without fear of the future. Are you need a freedom, emotional freedom, healthy and financial freedom? All right. Hey, hey, what's up, Shelley? I know you. The Hope Homestead. Okay, so I like this. But I think you should be tapping a little more into why someone would be clicking on something than asks them, you know, or that shows them how to laugh without fear. Why, why does someone feel that way? What I would put here would actually, if this is what you're putting here, I would actually speak to the pain. Because what you're going to be offering them is going to help them alleviate a pain. Laughing without fear of the future. You're speaking to someone who has fear of the future right now. So address that fear, call those fears out and tell them that if they, they fill out the information below, they're going to have steps to follow to release themselves from that. And I think that that's going to be a much stronger selling point for you. Bring her up. Hope. I love how vibrant you are. Love it. Okay. Yeah, this is good. This is good. Just make, make some edits to this part right here. This really just kind of speaking into the fear and giving them hope for moving ahead because laughing without fear of the future, if they don't have a deeper context from you or that's concerned, they're, they're just, it, it might not connect the way that you really want it to. All right. I'm going to do a couple more of these, you guys. Uh, and then, uh, we are going to do a little bit of Q and A. Greg, how are we doing in Q and A? Are we, is there a lot of like tech questions or should we keep going with the reviews?
Not a lot of tech questions. Um, you know, maybe one about customizing a menu and creating people with tags and graphics or how to make these pages mobile friendly are kind of the main questions right now.
Okay. Okay. Well, just so you guys know, so you can see it happening visually, uh, all of our pages are mobile friendly. Ah ha. Um, they automatically will adjust for that. Just so you know. Um, and then next week, of course, Greg's going to be able to deep dive with you guys, uh, when I'm going to be knees deep in boxes. All right. What's up? Hi, Tracy. All right. So just as we've mentioned with others who are still using the get away and custom homepage, just make sure that you're breaking apart and formatting the paragraphs, make it a little easier for the eye to flow down and then make it very clear where you want them to focus their eyes on the next steps you want them to take. Make that bold, make that big, shift the color, use a button, whatever, uh, whatever it needs to be. You really are trying to disrupt and keep attention in doing so. So, good job. Um, and I would, let me see. Also importantly, and this is really along the lines of, of Go For Gold. And if you're just getting started, then you'll learn a lot more about this on the about section of your page, especially if you intend to use your good oiling site as we teach and go for gold to generate leads for young living. You don't want to necessarily have young living by name out front and center because that's going to remove any degree of curiosity someone might have. Why would they need to learn more from you when they can go to Google because now they know what it is, right? So do consider following those formulas that we have there and go for gold and how you can tell your story while maintaining that degree of curiosity so that people have a reason to reach out and contact you. All right. Three ways to kickstart your way to wellness and wealth at any age. I like this. Uh, this looks like Bonnie. This must be a lead magnet that you've created from Go For Gold. Excellent. I like it. And you've got a roller bottle there. Make sure that you have your, um, make sure you have an image here for this. Cause it does not appear to be roll, uh, loading here correctly. All right. This is great. And yeah, good job. And your contact, that's correct. You've got that there in place. So I would say here, just in terms of your copy. I would talk a little bit about the problems that you know that someone is facing right now, because even though you're saying at any age, there is an age of someone that you're talking to right now. If you are really clear on who your perfect person is, then you're able to speak with real authority to what they're experiencing right now because you've kind of been there, right? So, uh, so, so I, I would actually speak directly into that person. So this feels of higher value and feels more targeted. And most importantly, feels like you're speaking straight to them. We're not writing, we're not generalists in what we do. Right? When we're putting ourselves out there online, we have a personal brand. If you're following and you've got the bat signal and everything going with what Martha teaches, you are not a generalist. You are a highly specifically oriented specialist. You're a specialist in what you know, what your life has been, what you're passionate about, your bat signal. And you need to make sure that that's coming through and speaking clearly to the person who shares that with you. Okay? So if it's wellness and wealth at any age, maybe wellness and wealth after 40, maybe wellness and wealth, uh, you know, starting in college, whatever that means for you, whoever that is for you. I would get a little bit more specific here so that we aren't, so that we aren't losing anyone who could really be great for us because they feel like this isn't for them because it's so general. I hope that makes sense. Awesome. I'm glad to see you taking action. Congrats. Congrats to everybody. Great work, everybody. All right. It's finally time to finally find hope, happiness and balance. Three ways to naturally boost your mood. You love it. Love it. There it is. Sometimes feeling low is inevitable. Okay. Awesome. So I would potentially, if this were me and I were advising you on this, I would encourage you to maybe use a question here. This isn't something that you need to do all the time. But, but asking a question like, you know, have you ever, have you ever felt like you couldn't shake the blues? Something like that, you know, like something that's going to maybe speak to someone who's struggling with the things that you're talking about. This is, I think this could be more powerful. And I think a question like that may be a more powerful way for you to initiate this sort of conversation you're having with them. Good job. As you're using the, the Go For Gold theme, you got your menu up here. Great. Okay, Valorant thieves, Steven and Wendy. I like your branding. This is good. Definitely do, um, definitely do try to offer something up at the top just to, to let folks know why they're here and what they can get from being here. Okay, keeper of your home. All right. Make this a button. I want to check it out. This should be, this should be bigger than everything else, right? This should be more obvious than everything else. You want to use emoji fingers pointing to it, whatever it is. This is a call to action. Make it big. Make it really big. Make their eye go to that and then go to the words that are next to it that tells them what it is. Make like that. That's the whole point of using a button. That's the whole point of, of sort of shifting up your formatting like this is so that your, their eyes are going to immediately go to, to, to the button, right? And the, the text next to the button should very clearly say, this is what you get when you press this button. And they're like, oh, I want to hit the button. I want to hit the button, right? Because we, we're like that since we're kids in elevators, right? Like, oh, button. I want to click it. Wait, what does it do? So that's, that's how the brain works when you're scrolling through a website. So, and, and that's, you know, for the average person and, and you need to bet on the average person. Some people really will read everything. Most people will absolutely not read everything. So you need to provide that opportunity for the people who are too red or too distracted to do all of the reading. All right. Free downloads. These are great. I would, when you've got a light script like this, I would try to maybe make it a little bit bolder or, or script part of it. And, and then again, some kind of click here, a button beneath them or click here on the image would be really, uh, really good for you. Free five steps to healthier living guide. Awesome. You formatted this nicely. Now you can target it just a little more clearly. Who is this? Who is it for? Who does, who does this benefit right now and in what unique way and offer them that? Do you dream of abundance? Learn how to become a leader. We offer a world-class business opportunity that allows you to fulfill your dreams. This is a kind of thing you could put up at the very top of your page, again, with a button, with a button. Put this above the fold. And then you're immediately, if somebody says business opportunity, show me. You've got your perfect person right away. And if somebody's like business opportunity, what's that? And they go, you didn't need them anyway, right? Put this up top. This is so powerful. Put it up there. It's going to help you a lot more when people arrive here. So, and, and the good thing is with our custom pages feature is I think Greg's going to be able to show next week. You could just click the little up button and just move the section right on up the page. You could just click the little up button and just move the section right on up the page. You can actually just modularly shift these parts of the website around. Uh, and you don't have to be a tech guru to do it. You just, you just click the arrow to make it go the direction you want it to go. I love that because I'm, oh my God, I don't code, you guys. All right. So yeah, try, get that thing up here up top, Wendy. That's, that's going to be really, really powerful for you guys. Um, and, and you know what? Like if, if, if you don't, if you think some people are going to be turned off by business opportunity out of the gate. They're kind of telling you that they're not your people, right? Because you are business bat signal, it seems. Uh, and, and it's not, that's not to say that wellness isn't a part of the picture. But if you've got that boldly placed on your page, girl, you better stick that up top. Get your people, get your people, like your strong people who are oriented toward leadership and, and who want to build a business. They see that first and they're like, who is this boss? I want to work with her. So please move that up. That's going to help you a lot. I like this. This isn't one of our stock images, is it Greg?
No, that one isn't.
I haven't seen this before. Yeah, it's beautiful.
Built-in theme, but it's not the stock image.
Right, right. So this is actually an image, uh, as a, an example of an image that has good resolution that, that works well inside of our theme. Uh, sometimes you have to play around and if you go to that, uh, to where you would upload this inside of our system. There is a little place where you hover your mouse over, or it actually spells it out on the page. The dimensions of the resolution of an image that you should have that can go into this field and fit well for you. All right, Gina Marie. I see, I, I wonder actually if you pulled your colors and stuff for your logo out of this image. If, if you pulled like this was like following Jess's tutorial. In several of the programs that we're attached to, maybe. Anyway, beautiful. Good job. All right, I would definitely recommend that you make this bigger. Just make, make the font a little bit bigger. Sometimes when we use the custom fonts, um, we have to select. Uh, a larger font for some of them to be more easily legible. You have done a good job of, of bolding some of this, which is good. Just make sure that it's a little bit bigger. So it's easier to move through. All right, uh, I would make this larger than the rest of the text. And then of course, make this nice and bold as well down here at the bottom. Because again, remember people see a block of text. If they aren't already engaged and really feeling like they need to read the whole thing. They're going to be looking for the next thing that they think is relevant before they get the heck off your page. So draw their eye to it. Good job. All right, free guide on how to know if you have a concussion. Huh? All right, listed concussion coach. Huh? Hi, this is cool. Okay, first, great logo, very graphic, very striking. I dig it. Um, uh, same advice is, as for anyone else. Try to plug in what you do for others first and foremost at the top with a button that tells them what they can get. Advocate for themselves, heal the most natural products. Huh? Wow. Yeah. So, um, definitely figure out what, you know, what is it that? What is it that branches off from what you talk about that, that would be a thing that you give them? It could be one of these giveaways that you have here. You know, five, five warning signs that you might have a concussion. Have that maybe up here at the top or a free guide, uh, for, to self advocate for, for, for people with concussions and their caregivers. Um, and have that up top. Because if you want to be known as the expert, the authority on this inside of the circle, inside of the sort of bat signal realm that you want to operate in. Then you want to make sure that that is abundantly clear right at the top of the page because you want them to remember you for it. This is a nice, this is a nice logo and, and you should have this logo and use this logo. But what you need to use this real estate for is, hey, you, yeah, you, this is for you. Okay? This is what I do for you. Awesome. Way to, way to like specialize. I'm actually very, very curious about what this looks like. Um, and then if you can break this down just a little bit more. Maybe say, you know, are you experiencing this? Uh, have you felt like this? Did you, did something like this happen to you? Just kind of break down just a little bit more, right? Because they can Google, do I have a concussion? How do you address this a little more uniquely? Just, just make it a little bit more full here in terms of what they can expect when they give you their information. Because this is an exchange of value for contact information. And so you just want to make it abundantly clear. So it's easy for them to know that this is something that they want and need. Good job. Jessica, all right, ready to kick chemicals to the curb today. Grab my guide for simple steps to a toxic home. Okay, this is another one where the question, so a question is a good idea. Uh, but is the person who's arriving here, someone who already knows that they need to kick toxic chemicals to the curb? If they already know that, or they already on this, the journey to that? Maybe they need, you know, a checklist or recipes. Or are they someone who is experiencing issues or struggles or whatever? And maybe they're mildly curious and they need to know what it looks like. So, um, I would, I would consider looking at this because right now this reads like something that would be super desirable to somebody who is already in the young living verse. But maybe not quite so compelling or directly speaking to somebody who isn't yet. Right? So just think back a little, just think back to you before you started with young living, right? Like maybe you were aware, like, you know, so you've heard that, that the chemicals in your products are toxic. But, but now what? What do you do now? Like, do I throw out all of this stuff and all of the, you know, dozens or, you know, hundreds of dollars that I've spent on it? Like, what do I do next? What does this look like? How do I know who to trust? I feel like my trust has been violated. Like, there's a lot of directions you can go with that. But just make sure that you're having a conversation with them that they are actively trying to participate in right now and not just the one that's here for you. We're a community creating safe and healthy homes for our family. Oh, this is so pretty. This is so, so pretty with the colors. Good job. Um. Okay, so I would honestly, like, if this is, if community is your big sell. Put a big button like this color, this nice like pinky coral color right here, right here that says join us. Take them over to your lead group. Like your, your big pitch is we're a community creating self, safe and healthy homes for our community. Come join us. And if they're like, I don't know, maybe not yet. And they keep scrolling, then they're like, okay, well, I could, I could go for a toxin-free home. That works too. Like that's, you see what I mean? Like this, this is actually super bold and man, this is pretty. But give them a call to action here and a thing that they can do. All right. This is great. Oh, it's such a cute family. Let's link arms. I like it. You've got a landing page you go off to here. Oh, oh no, this is, this is a lead magnet. Hey, hey, all right. So what you've linked up here needs to be on the other side of a landing page. Let me see if it's here as well. Okay, somebody needs to fill this out to be able to get to that page we were just on, right? So if you want this, if it's the same thing, is it? I think it might be. Um, make sure the link on this button is hashtag lead and not your, um. Uh, not the link to your, your lead magnet. All right, excellent. Beautiful branding there. Yeah, this, this is something that should be on the other side of a landing page. Who is this? Tammy, this is great. Some fads are really hard for following. Get my guide, three tips to drink your water without the stress. Do a water challenge with your friends because challenges are better with a friend. Okay, so, um, so Tammy, I, I would encourage you to maybe explore just a little bit more in terms of bullet points that you can add here. Because why would somebody want a water, water challenge? Like, who is it that finds drinking enough water to be stressful, right? Like, so easy, a cat can do it. Most Americans aren't drinking enough water, Canadians or wherever you are. Like most, the average human is drinking X percent less water than they ought to be. It's easy for this cat over here. We make it fun. Come join us. We got a challenge. Right? Do you, do you see how like you're, you're kind of projecting how you feel on, on this. Uh, so you're halfway there, right? So we know how, how maybe you once felt about getting enough water in, or maybe how you feel about getting water in without this challenge, right? But they aren't quite there yet, right? So, so they're like, okay, drinking enough water can help you, da, 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 da. And that should actually be what's up here, right? Drinking enough water can help you. What's the outcome your person's looking for? Get my guide, three tips on how to get enough water in. Most Americans aren't getting enough water because, um, and we make it fun. Here, come check it out, right? So, um, I, I would just, just consider massaging the, the words there, adding some bullet points in. It's really kind of getting into what's in their head. So getting it out of yours and into theirs. Uh, and that's, it's a practice. Just keep working at it. Uh, it's not something that we naturally think about and communicate and do. It's copyrighting. But it is, uh, it's probably one of the most profitable skills that exist in the world today. So, you know, it's worth learning. All right, there you are. Hello. Um. All right, same here. You, you've done a good job breaking up the text. Uh, make sure bold this stuff, make it bigger. Add some emojis pointing to the contact button. Anything that will draw the eye down toward what you want them to do next. Good job. All right, be in the know, sign up to learn more about living a natural lifestyle. So I would add something that is just you add, add a little more sexy to this, add a little more detail to this. Who is this for? Who needs to be in the know? Is this exclusive? Why does it feel exclusive? You know, who is the person that this is for? Well, how do they know that they're going to find exactly something that's for them and not just for whoever? I would, I would want to get a little bit more detailed on this, especially if it's going to pop up right away. All right, I do super dig your photography and your colors here. Awesome. Okay, uh, just like we mentioned before. Just, just add, add yourself a little thing up here up top. I do this for this person. If that's you, get this thing. All right, about you and your story. Yeah. So all we really need to just make sure that we do here, because right now this is a beautiful business card. Um, what we need this to be is something that generates leads for you. So I help my bat signal person get what my bat signal person wants. Click here. Put that up at the very top. Use these pretty colors for a button and you will be off to the races. All right, we'll do, I think I was probably gonna have to call it off at this one. Do we, do we have any Q and A that we need to do at this point?
Those are a couple of little ones. So, you know, we could probably cover it in about five minutes. So.
Okay. All right, cool. I'm going to do Amy's here and you guys, if, if we didn't have time to get to you today, please shoot us an email. Let us know when you can be on live and we'll do this again. Well, we're going to do this every week. Can't do it with every, you know, all of them. This is kind of a free for all. I didn't expect to have so many people say that they wanted a review. Uh, so, um, hopefully if you've been watching, uh, you've been paying attention and seeing some of the things that you can tweak on your own site. Because a lot of the stuff, as you find, uh, I'm, I'm repeating, you know, it's kind of the same for a lot of us. All right, so Amy is using one of our built-in themes with, with her own image here up top. This is great. A life above the wellness line. I like, I like this image here. I would encourage you, uh, because you know, a life above the wellness line is something that sets very inside circle, young living stuff. And it doesn't necessarily speak straight into the heart and mind of the person who really want this thing to be reaching. So since this is not just something that's a tool to engage your young living members, it's something that you really want to be using to get new members. You want to figure out how to communicate your values in a way that really reaches and grabs them where they are. You are eventually going to take them into this circle where they're going to learn about the wellness line, wellness purpose, purpose and abundance, about seed to seal, about Gary and about all these great things. But right now that's a completely foreign language that they're not interested in yet. They're interested in what their story is and what they're struggling to get figured out. And so if you can show up immediately when they see this page and say, hey, I know how to help you solve that problem you've got. And they're like, get out of my head. And then, you know, they, they get what you're offering. All right, so we've got your story. Great. So again, bold this out, make it big, get them to go where you want them to go. And then of course, this is one of our themes. It seems like it goes on for a while. Maybe you have your blog attached here or nope, that's just our theme. Oh no, we do. There we go. You do have your blog here. Good job. Cool, cool. All right. Yeah. Excellent. Okay, that was, that was a little bit of a marathon. Thank you all for sticking around. We are going to be doing more, um, you know, potentially offering more, uh, training, uh, on, on homepage setup. I know we've done a lot to update, um, you know, the, the way the editor works and what you can do with it. Uh, we're kind of overdue for like just a full-on like here is how you make your own homepage, like just generally for getting willing. So. Yeah, but hey, how, how many of you guys here right now, maybe just with a quick show of hands? Had no idea that a good oiling site could look like some of these do. Yep. Yeah. So I mean, guys, you can, you can do anything with us. I, I mean, so many people think that, you know, you need, you need to have this thing and then that thing. And then no. Um, and, and the truth is, I mean, any, maybe I'm going to lower hands for those of you who are here, who, who we've shown your website to. How many of you, um, you know, felt like this was actually a lot easier than you thought it would be? To get your site set up? A few. It's okay. We're honest. So, um, I, I think that, I think that, yeah, we're, we're overdue for like a full-on, like here's how we get everything in order. You know, I think the trickiest thing, guys, about building a website is that, um, it's the surface level. It's on the outside, right? If you've ever, if you're familiar with the, the golden circle, uh, that Simon Sinek teaches and that I teach religiously. Cause I think it's like the most important way that we need to understand how we communicate because we do it the wrong way. The website's on the outside. And what's on the outside, as you know about wellness, should be dictated by what's on the inside. And if we aren't super clear on what's on the inside and then what's in between the inside and the outside. Of course, it's going to be super frustrating to figure out what the heck goes on the outside. Because like, what are you even putting it on? Like, what's, what's the structure? What's the purpose? Why am I even doing this? I mean, even when I work with clients one-on-one, um, there's always this sort of like, when, when the website, what about the website? What about the website? But like until we have core things figured out first and established, at least in outline format. You're building a pretty business card. And the good news is, is that when you get started with us, that thing is fully functional as a sales tool and education tool for building young living. And as you brand yourself and you establish those base lines and those core things and the stuff that builds out from the inside. It becomes a lot easier to understand what goes on the landing page, what goes on the homepage. Where do these things direct? Because you've got a fully formed structure that it sits on, right? So we are going to get into that. Um, and yes, Jean Simon Sinek, the golden circle, great YouTube video. Practically memorized it because I've taught it so many times now. Um, so yeah. Excellent. You guys are great. Good job. Uh, and next week. Grandmaster Greg here is going to put on his wizard hat and show you guys how to do tech things.
It's gonna be fun. Got some new stuff that can show off too. So, yeah.
Yes, yes. And, uh, I'm, I'm excited to hear how it goes. Thank you Nina. That's so sweet of you. I'm, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that I will have a functional enough office by week after, in the new place. Uh, and, uh, yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll be excellent, definitely. And next week will be excellent. And then, uh, yeah, soon to come, we'll be doing more. Oh, actually, we're going to feature a get oiling member next week in the tech training. If any of you guys, anybody here use Acuity scheduling? Like if you, you have people that book calls with you, I know if you're with Martha, you know about this. Like those of you who are in her home, the home-based revolution. If you use Acuity scheduling and you want to embed your scheduler, it works a little different from Calendly, which I have taught. Acuity has a, um, an affiliate plan, which is why it's become so popular with our crowd here. Uh, because people are discovering the joys of affiliate marketing of mailbox money. So Acuity works just a little bit differently from Calendly. And Megan Larson is going to show us how to plug it up on the Get Oil link site next week. Awesome. All right. Well, thank you guys for sticking around. Uh, I'll see you in two weeks. Greg will be here for tech next. And, uh, y'all have a great week.
See you later.